Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 30th, 2016, meeting of the Delhi Township Board of Trustees. As is our usual practice, we will begin first with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Coincidentally, tonight's moment of silence happens to be dedicated to a Cincinnati firefighter. Tonight's moment of silence is dedicated to Charles Charlie Lenhart. Thirty-seven years as a Cincinnati fireman. He was most recently at the Cincinnati 24s. He also served in the Christ Mobile Care, U.C. Air Mobile Care. And for those of us in this community, we knew him as a coach for the Oak Hills Youth Association. So if we could please remember Charlie Lenhart's family, his wife Peggy, two daughters, three daughters, Laura, Annie, and Heidi, and five grandchildren. Thank you, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone, we have a full house, a long agenda, and lots of activity. So we'll begin with motions for consideration.
Motion 2016-196, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting held on November 9th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-196 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-197, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-197 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-198, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending November 8th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-198 to approve payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-199, accept the voluntary resignation of Dwight Pete E. Landrum, Township Administrator, effective December 2nd, 2016.
I move motion 2016-199 to accept the voluntary resignation of Dwight Pete E. Landrum.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-200, accept the voluntary resignation of Nicholas M. Conklin from full-time career firefighter/paramedic, and approve his hiring and reassignment to part-time firefighter/paramedic, effective December 5th, 2016, at a rate per the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association.
I move motion 2016-200 to accept the voluntary resignation of Nicholas M. Conklin.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-201, approve the promotion of Jesse E. Crook from part-time firefighter/paramedic to full-time career firefighter/paramedic in the Fire Department per the rate of the collective bargaining agreement with Professional Firefighters Local 3389, IAAF, effective December 5th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-201 to approve the promotion of Jesse E. Crook.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-202, approve the hiring of Garrett G. Fuller and Jacob A. Lunning for part-time firefighter/EMT position in the Fire Department at the rate per the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association, effective on or after December 1st, 2016.
I move motion 2016-202 to approve the hiring of Garrett G. Fuller and Jacob A. Lunning.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-203, accept the voluntary resignation of Tyler M. Cresser, seasonal maintenance worker in the Public Works Department, effective November 30th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-203 to accept the voluntary resignation of Tyler M. Cresser.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-204, approve the official meeting times for the Delhi Township Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commission for 6:00 PM, effective January 1st, 2017, with all meetings being announced in accordance with the Rules Resolution of the Delhi Township Board of Trustees.
I move motion 2016-204 to approve the official meeting times for the Delhi Township Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commission.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-205, accept and acknowledge receipt of the zoning commission's recommendation on case ZC 2016-1, the Delhi Pike Business Corridor Map and Text Amendment, and schedule a public hearing on December 14th, 2016, at 6:00 PM.
I move motion 2016-205 to accept and acknowledge the receipt of the zoning commission's recommendation.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-206, approve the Parks and Recreation Department submission of a grant application to build it with Kaboom, grant offered by Kaboom, for $80,000 for a playground structure for Five Points Park with potential cash match of up to $8,500 funded by TIF and/or park funds.
I move motion 2016-206 for the submission of the grant application to build it with Kaboom grant.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-207, approve the proclamation in declaring December 27th, 2016, as Delhi Township Bicentennial Remembrance Day in Delhi Township.
I move motion 2016-207 to approve the proclamation declaring December 27th, 2016, as Delhi Township Bicentennial Remembrance Day.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-208, approve the proclamation in declaring December 3rd, 2016, as Bicentennial Celebration Remembrance Day in Delhi Township.
I move motion 2016-208 to approve the proclamation in declaring December 3rd, 2016, as Bicentennial Celebration Remembrance Day.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion 2016-209, appoint Gregory J. DeLong as interim Township Administrator while maintaining his position as Director of Community Development with a temporary pay adjustment of 10% of base salary, effective December 5th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-209 to appoint Gregory J. DeLong as the interim Township Administrator.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries. Following our agenda, the next we'll have is presentations. First up will be Fire Chief Doug Campbell.
Thank you, trustees. Well, this date's been a long time of coming. I know we planned for it back in, what, September-ish? And like everything else, things change. And we really appreciate the opportunity to have the whole family here tonight, because that's what it's all about. Everybody's getting sworn in at once. We get to make a good show for it and really fill the seats for this, you know, super special event. I always say this, when we hire, we hire from part-time inside Delhi. They've got time in. It's always a pleasure to see these guys come through the ranks. It's why we work so hard to make sure we get the right individuals part-time. And I just wish we could hire them all full-time. I mean, bottom none, these are the best firefighters we could possibly have, so I'm so proud of them. First one I'd like to bring up here, Jeremy. Jeremy's being promoted to full-time EMT tonight. Jeremy's worked for us for three years now. You might not know this, he was a hand model as a child. You can see the likes in advertisements for Tonka and Hasbro?
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay. I don't know if it's because the face wasn't good enough or not, but we'll take him. He's a Delhi boy, St. Dominic and elder. I'll go with the elder. One of the nice things with Jeremy is we got to really kind of surprise him. When he was offered the position, he was working out at St. Dominic doing a fire safety thing. So was it the third graders?
There was a lot.
Yeah. A bunch of third graders congratulated him. He's like, "For what? They're like, getting the job." So it worked out really nice for him. I'd like to introduce his lovely wife, Stephanie Niehe. She will be doing the pinning ceremony. So anybody who wants to take pictures, this is your time. Yes, another Pritchard in the fire family. What can we say about Ben? Well, Ben, Ben has also worked for us three years. Pales in comparison to his father. He is also a Delhi boy, OLV, elder. He's very active in the Firefighter Combat Challenge. He's famous, he's been on YouTube multiple times, he scores very high. He is all strength, all speed. I'm totally impressed with what he's capable of. He also does MMA. He's a Michigan fan and a Notre Dame fan, so, yeah, sorry.
We'll talk later.
Yeah. He takes it nicely. Big thing that Ben has also been very involved with is the ALA stair climb. You know, you see his name at the top of the charts, very physically fit, always active, helps motivate the other guys into doing physical activities. Because with firefighting, it is almost like professional sports to train at a high level, maintain that high level for years, and he's the epitome of it. So I'd like to introduce Pete Pritchard, up to do his pinning ceremony.
Dad, that is awesome. Needs his glasses. I was going to say.
Okay, next Jesse Crook. Jesse's being hired as a firefighter/paramedic this evening. He is the name that you just recently approved to hire. Jesse comes by way of Sycamore. He is a graduate of Sycamore High School. He's also been with us for three years. He has his associates in emergency medical services, and he is working on completing his Bachelor of Science in Allied Health. So bookworm, paramedic, firefighter, he's all good. He's all good. One thing I can say about him is the ultimate Star Wars fan, the amount of stuff that's around the firehouse we owe to him. You know, usually it's, he didn't get to see the originals, but hey, you know, that's neither here nor there. But I certainly admire, we have a lot to talk about with him. Julie Crook is here tonight, his mother, to do his pinning. Wally's also being promoted firefighter/paramedic. This is his swearing-in tonight. Wally has been with us for the last three years. He's a graduate of Lebanon, Ohio, High School. He has his associates in fire science technology. You've also probably seen his name, and he's been up here before and recognized for the ALA stair climb as well. I forgot to mention Jesse does it as well. So these guys, you know, it's physical fitness, it's something they take seriously in staying in good health, so it's very much admired by the department and certainly supported by the community. Also, those that may not know, he also was Mr. February in the calendar at the Cincinnati State. It's Hunks and Ladders, you might check it out, but I heard it's good. Emily Russell, his wife, is here tonight to do his pinning. Next, I'd like to call up Brian Sunderhouse. Now, Brian is too a familiar name. We've hired him, he is being promoted tonight from EMT to paramedic. He has served in the Marine Corps, he's a graduate of Fairfield High School. He's worked for us for five years. He was hired in May of 2015. So with his promotion tonight comes a lot more responsibilities, and we're looking forward to bringing him on. He's worked for us for a while now in the paramedic state, so it's been really good. You can see he's dressed up a little goofier than the rest, and that is because he participates in the color guard, very honored position and something that, you know, he volunteers his time with. He's also taken on the responsibility for community risk reduction and developing a program here at the firehouse which helps us collaborate with other agencies to reduce risk in the community. So Brian's very heavily involved in getting that program fired up, something new to the community. Tonight, you swore, or you hired Garrett Fuller. If you don't know, that is Brian's brother. So I'd like to have him come up here. Brian already has been pinned, but he'd like a picture together. So Garrett, come on up.
Perfect.
Gentlemen, come on up here, so you guys can read the screen. They're going to take their oath of office now, so this is time to turn over the mic to Trustee Seavey.
Okay. Gentlemen, before we take the oath of office, I just want all of you to know that on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we could not be more proud of your accomplishments that you have done here tonight, and we are so proud of the Delhi Township Fire Department. So congratulations from all of us. Ben, we'll talk later.
All right, can you all see this all right? Okay, all right. We're going to try to break it down a little bit as much as we can, okay? All right, I'm going to say aye, and each one of you says your name. Okay? And raise your right hand. Ready. Aye.
Aye.
Benjamin Pritchard.
Jeremy Niehe.
Brian Sunderhouse.
Got it. Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that as a member of the Delhi Township Fire Department, my fundamental duty is to serve the people I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life, health, and property against fire and other perils, and to maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that as a member of the Delhi Township Fire Department, my fundamental duty is to serve the people I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life, health, and property against fire and other perils, and to maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
I will uphold the standards of my profession, continually searching for new and improved methods of serving the people, and will share my knowledge and skill with my colleagues and descendants.
I will uphold the standards of my profession, continually searching for new and improved methods of serving the people, and will share my knowledge and skill with all my colleagues and descendants.
I will never allow my personal feelings nor danger to self deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
I will never allow my personal feelings nor danger to self deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
I will at all times respect the property and rights of all men and women, the laws of my country, and members I serve with.
I will at all times respect the property and rights of all men and women, the laws of my country, and members I serve with.
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust, and I accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service.
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust, and I accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service.
I will constantly strive to achieve the objectives and ideals that the fire service instills, dedicating myself to the saving of life, preventing and suppressing fires, and performing other duties enacted and placed up to me.
I will constantly strive to achieve the objectives and ideals that the fire service instills, dedicating myself to the saving of life, preventing and suppressing fires, and performing other duties enacted and placed up to me.
As a member of the Delhi Township Fire Department, I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility, and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
As a member of the Delhi Township Fire Department, I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility, and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Dave Bacon, please come up. Dave is also a familiar name in the firehouse, because tonight he has been promoted from firefighter/paramedic to lieutenant. Dave is graduate of Colrain High School. He's also an Eagle Scout. He's worked for Delhi for the last 10 years. He was hired full-time in August of 2013. He holds an Associate's Degree in Fire Science Technology and a Bachelor of Organizational Leadership from Mount St. Joe University. Dave is kind of like that scout is thrifty to the max. He has pretty much figured out how to repurpose about everything in the firehouse. So we don't throw things away. If it's made of fabric, if it's made of materials he can work with, he's highly skilled. We have handbags, things, all sorts of stuff, carrying cases that you would not imagine come out of the materials that we have around the firehouse. It's just something that, it's impressive. He has the responsibility of managing our fire gear inspections and repair. He's pretty much on par with that, so yes, he does so. He has a machine, and he does our repairs internally. He has saved us a tremendous amount of time and effort in trying to outsource it, so he takes care of all that gear. It's a very, very important thing. Dave also volunteers his time. Every Monday night with the Explorer Pilot Post as their advisor. He's really aided in putting that program, it's a top-notch program. I think we're getting kids from all over the place. And again, you've seen the names up here of who we've hired out of that post. So it works. We get them into the program, we brainwash them, and then we hire them, and eventually they end up here. Dave, when I called him and, you know, told him that he was being promoted essentially, he said, "This is great news." He said, "We can't imagine the viewer he's at," and I had forgotten he was out of town. So you were standing under Half Dome?
Across the valley from Half Dome, yes.
Yeah. So he could see Half Dome. He was in Yosemite, climbing rocks and doing all the fun things that he does as a former scout, so. He was up there with Nick Conklin as well, so daredevils. I said, "Don't break any bones, hurry up, come back in one piece, and we'll make this work." So he is joined here tonight with his family, and I'd like to introduce Mary Kay, who will be doing his pinning. Might have to do it kid in hand.
By the way, these sentences are long. I
David Bacon.
Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the members I serve with, and that as a lieutenant of the Delhi Township Fire Department, my fundamental duty is to serve the people I swear to protect, to safeguard, and to preserve life, health, and prosperity against fire and other perils, and to maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
To hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the members I serve with, and that as a lieutenant of the Delhi Township Fire Department, my fundamental duty is to serve the people I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life, health, and property against fire and other perils, and to maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
As a lieutenant, I will uphold the standards of my profession and position, continually searching for new and improved methods of serving the people and members of the department, and will share my knowledge and skills with my colleagues and firefighters. I am assigned to lead.
As a lieutenant, I will uphold the standards of my profession and position, continually searching for new and improved methods of serving the people and members of the department, and will share my knowledge and skills with my colleagues and firefighters. I am assigned to lead.
I will never allow my personal feelings nor danger to self deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
I will never allow my personal feelings nor danger to self deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
I will lead my fire company to the best of my ability with the fairness and no prejudice.
I will lead my fire company to the best of my ability with fairness and no prejudice.
I will at all times respect the property, the rights of men and women, the laws of my country, and the members I serve with.
I will at all times respect the property and rights of all men and women, and laws of my country, and members I serve with.
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of fire department and public faith and trust, and I accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service.
I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of fire department and public faith and trust, and I accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service.
I will constantly strive to achieve the objectives and ideals that the fire service instills.
I will constantly strive to achieve the objectives and ideals that the fire service instills.
Dedicating myself to the saving of life, preventing and suppressing fires, and performing other duties enacted and placed up to me.
Dedicating myself to the saving of life, preventing and suppressing fires, and performing other duties enacted and placed up to me.
As a member of the Delhi Township Fire Department, I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility, and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
As a member of the Delhi Township Fire Department, I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility, and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Nothing like waiting her out for a handshake, leave them hanging. I'm so proud of these guys that work very hard for the things that they have, and it shows. I think muscling through that oath, you're thinking, "Wow, that's long." I hope they live by that oath. That's the whole point. This job is not something to be taken lightly, and if you look at the number of, you know, jobs out there that, you know, you basically put upon yourself, the service to your community, it's something they shouldn't take lightly. So I hope they all take what they learned and someday memorize that oath. It's something I want you guys to keep to heart and just remember, it's all about the community. So without a doubt, I'm super proud of them. I'd just like to say, give them another round of applause.
Okay, there is a second presentation this evening. Okay, there is a second presentation this evening, so if I could have my fellow board members and fiscal officer join me at the podium.
As some of you may have heard, we accepted tonight the resignation of our Administrator, Pete Landrum. So, in recognition of his four years, we say, with great appreciation, the Delhi Township Board of Trustees, Fiscal Officer, Departments of Administration, Community Development, Fire, Parks and Recreation, Police, and Public Works recognizes Pete Landrum. Thank you, Pete.
I did want to thank all the trustees and the fiscal officer and the past elected officials as well. This board's been great. Kind of want to talk to the public instead of, let me do this real quick. You're not aware of how blessed you are to have a good board and have a good community as well and department heads. I've served under the best department heads, your Safety Services, your Fire Chief, of course, you just heard, Jim Howarth, our Police Chief, Ron Ripperger, Public Works, Josh Torbeck, who's not here, he's on vacation, our Parks Director, Lisa Durgur, my good HR manager now, Patty Dignan, she's not here, but everybody would not be able to work without her, she's our IT Director, and Greg DeLong, my Community Development Director. I just wanted to thank these guys because they made, they make me and all these guys look good because they do such a good job. They really do. So, the community's very blessed. And I know I'm preaching to the choir for the fire, but, you know, all the department heads do such a good job. I did want to thank the Fab members and the groups, the volunteer groups like CERT, Citizens on Patrol, Bicentennial Committee, Plan the Pike Oversight Committee, so many volunteers. They give, they give, they give, they give, and don't ask for a dime. All the community groups like the DBA, Kiwanis, and could go on and on there. In the Mount, we developed over the last four years a really good relationship with the Mount St. Joseph. They have a good president here. If you haven't met him, Dr. Williams. We hope to have many good things in the future and partner with them. And I wanted to thank all the residents I've met and spoken with as well. They've been great. We've done a lot in four years, and it's totally, I feel like it's a totally different place than when I started, and still much to do, but it's in excellent hands. Just doing, just passing on a couple thoughts here real quick. Number one, always stay positive. Delhi Township has much to offer, and you're a great community. Don't let anyone say otherwise. Yes, there's issues, but let's work together and stay positive. Every community is having issues with crime, mostly all related to drugs, and no community is exempt from it. So, don't let you think that you can go to this community and there's not going to be an issue. Stay here with the community that you love, and that's a great community. Delhi has so much to offer, and things are changing. Just remember, things take time, but the plans are in place, and many things are happening behind the scenes. Be proud to be a Delhi-ian. It is truly a great community filled with great people, and I have been honored to serve the community, and I wish best wishes to everyone. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know me, I cry at Folgers Coffee commercials. I also cry at Hallmark cards, so just know that ahead of time. As I promised in the beginning, fire people, for your reception, please be excused now before we continue the rest of the meeting. We'll give you a leave of absence.
And thank you to the whole fire department for being here.
Yes, congratulations again.
What a nice support of the, of your brothers.
Where's Jim going?
Jerry.
Congratulations.
Send us some ice cream.
All right, good.
There you are.
Mr. Landrum, we have one other quick presentation for you. This is from Dale Weisker and the Fab.
As the senior member of the Financial Advisory Board, we would like to thank Administrator Dwight Landrum.
Go with Pete, please.
Well-kept secret.
For your service to our community, and especially for making our job easier. He could not have been more accommodating. He supplied us with everything we needed and answered our questions in timely manner. We will sorely miss you. We also like to wish you well in your future endeavors, and thank you, Pete, for just being a great professional.
Thank you, Dale. All right, we'll continue with trustees' correspondence. Trustee Oswald.
I just want to thank and congratulate Pete for everything he's done. From when I started three years ago, we had many plans and visions, and since then, we've done stuff the township hasn't seen before. Specifically, we passed energy aggregation. We did a CIC group. We did a strategic redevelopment plan. We hired, we increased it up to 32 officers with the recent levy. We've built a new $3 million firehouse that replaced an old volunteer firehouse. We balanced the budget, which hasn't been done in years. Among other things, he does a lot of little things that people don't realize, such as Facebook, which is a huge social network to reach out and have the voice, and he does that himself. And that's something I was just talking to Fiscal Officer Luby about, we're going to have to look for in our next administrator because he's raised the bar, and that's a new expectation we're going to have. But there are a lot of things he's had, new signage, new welcome signs to the township, new logo, many things, and I think he's done a great job of really encompassing our vision as a board, talking to the board members, knowing our position on the issues, finding common ground between us. I know I'm probably the toughest one on here. We always say there's a thorn, a rose between two thorns, but there's actually a thorn between two roses. Pete knows that, but I did that because I know I can challenge him, and you'd respond, and I knew you're good at your job. So, you've made my job easier. Thank you for everything you've done.
Trustee Sturts.
Just basically to reiterate that, I've only been on the board a year, but thank you for getting me acclimated and onboard as quickly as you did, and being our mother as you watched out for us every step of the way. So, thank you.
Fiscal Officer Luby.
Pete, it's truly been a pleasure working with you over these last three years, and I truly appreciate the guidance and getting me up to speed when I started as fiscal officer, so I appreciate that. All the work you do with Fab, getting all the reports ready and keeping them up to date what's going on in the township, other than the financial information. The leadership and the relationship that you have with your department heads, people don't realize how smoothly that helps make the township operate, and it makes our job a lot easier. One thing that stands out is the work that you did with the Strategic Economic Development Plan. You put a lot of hours, a lot of effort into that, and your commitment, and as fiscal officer and as a resident, I do appreciate the work that you put into that project. So, you did, you set the bar high for your successor. It's going to be tough to find someone to fill your shoes, and I just want to wish you all the luck at the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Well, Pete, you know, we said in the beginning, we weren't going to look back, we're only going to look forward, and we knew, we knew at the time when we hired Pete Landrum that he would not retire from Delhi. And so, we're fortunate and grateful for the four years that we've had him. As Trustee Oswald stated, we've come a long way in four years, and hopefully, we're still rolling in that direction. There's a lot of things happening, and they're going to continue to happen. We're not going to miss a step, but we will miss Pete Landrum. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, guys.
All right, then, do you have a report from the Fiscal Officer, Mr. Luby?
No report.
Okay. No public hearings, reports from departments heads, none?
None.
Okay. All right, then, we'll continue with the reading of the resolutions, Mr. Luby.
Resolution 2016-259, Resolution Approving Purchase Order Obligations. And current on behalf of the Township by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations and dispensing with the second reading.
Introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-260, Resolution Authorizing Transfers From One Appropriation Item to Another Pursuant to Revised Code 5705.40 and Dispensing with the Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum.
That time of year for transfers, a few transfers here. First, it's Police Department has $3,000 going from equipment repairs to patrol supplies for the purchase of TASER supplies, batteries, duty cartridges, training cartridges, and et cetera. That's 3,000. Another, from the same account, being transferred another $3,000 into other supplies, and that is for possible purchase of tires for vehicles, vacuum cleaner, and snow blower. Then we go to the Fire Department. We have a transfer from, into vehicle fire repairs of $4,000. Need we say anymore? The other, another one for 4,000 from gasoline into fire vehicle repair, so that's a total of $8,000. New EGR cooler and oil cooler for new ambulance and rear suspension repair to Greenwell engine. So, they keep coming. Next, as well, two things that always are coming to us with the Fire Department as well are building repairs. So, Station 33 repairs, $10,000 transferred. Luckily, we have it. It's from gasoline into Station 33 repairs, and that is to fulfill obligations, let's see, for, for balance of 2016. Is that, that's still more 33 station repairs, right, Doug? Okay, and gas and electric from Station 33 repairs into Station 30 repairs is $4,000. So, Doug's, Chief Campbell's got a lot of repairs going on from vehicles into station repairs, but doing an excellent job on those. So, this, hopefully, Chief Campbell, is that pretty much the transfers for the year unless a surprise happens?
I don't have allocated funds, just to make sure that if we have some catastrophic, we've got the ones in the right place. So, not all of it's earmarked, it needs to be in the right place so we can do it quickly.
Right. I asked all the departments to try to have all transfers done for the year by today's date, so, because December just goes too quick, and there's two meetings, and the last meeting's really quick. So, and purchase orders and so forth are going to be coming.
And historically, we've had some repairs that we've waited until the budget could handle it until the end of the year.
Exactly, that as well.
Is that some of yours too, Doug?
Yeah.
Not at this time?
At this moment. Now, that is for the police, their transfers, they're purchasing a few things because they have some funds left at the end of the year, like the TASER cartridges and stuff like that, so. But that's all I have for transfers tonight.
All right. Thank you.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-261, Resolution Approving Change Order Number Two to the Contract with Alita Inc. for the Delhi Township Rehabilitation and Repair Project 2016-A and Dispensing with the Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Ripperger?
Thank you, trustees. This is a closeout change order. We normally do one every year. Luckily, this one is done in the same year that we did to work. We knew this was coming, and we did go a little over our original contract amount. We knew that was coming when we paved the park in July. I believe I talked about it during the budget and kept Fab updated with pictures and everything. So, anybody have any questions?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-262, Resolution Amending Resolution 2015-150, Renewal Agreement with Dental Care Plus effective October 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016, and entering into a renewal agreement with Dental Care Plus effective January 1st, 2017 for the provision of group dental insurance benefits for eligible township employees and officers, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute such agreement and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Lisa Durgur.
Thank you, trustees. This is kind of a two-fold resolution. One, we moved to self-insurance for medical effective 10-1, and when we did so, we changed our broker from Highland to Cheryl Morgan. Part of that move also, our dental insurance had commissions built in where we pay Cheryl Morgan as a consultant a little bit differently. So, the first part of the resolution is effective 10-1, our rates, they backed out a 4% commission. So, our employees will see a little bit of a reimbursement in December, once you guys pass this, effective 10-1 on those dental premiums. The second part of the resolution is our moving forward with our same dental care plan with Dental Care Plus effective 1-1-17, no plan changes, and the rates are actually down a percent again because of those commissions were backed out. We originally were looking at a 3% increase, but since the commissions are backed out, it's only, it's a 1% decrease to employees.
Okay.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-263, Resolution Authorizing and Entering Into An Agreement with the Visus Vision Care Plus for Group Vision Insurance Benefits for Eligible Township Employees and Officers, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute such agreement and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Lisa.
Yes, so this is an additional option for employees to enroll in a vision plan. We don't currently have one for the township. I've had several employees kind of inquire, and I've administered them in the past for a previous employer. They're a great benefit. They offer a co-insurance or a copayment for a vision exam. They offer allowances for contact lenses or glass lenses, and then an allowance for frames as well. So, if your family uses vision benefits quite a bit, it's a pretty good deal, so.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-264, Resolution Employing Lane Felix and Raisenbeck Company, LPA, as legal counsel and appointing David C. Lane, Law Director, pursuant to Revised Code 504.15 and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum.
This is one of the many resolutions we have that's an annual thing that we're doing tonight. So, of course, like it says, this is appointing Dave as our law director and for the year-long contract, which I strongly recommend we do.
So, he's, he wants to stay with us?
He wants to stay with, no, he's coming with me. I'm just kidding.
Wait a minute.
I'm just kidding.
Wait a minute.
You've got to give him the plaque back. You've got to give him the plaque back. No.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Congratulations, Mr. Lane. We'll see you again.
Resolution 2016-265, Resolution Entering Into An Addendum to the Services Agreement with Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC, for a dedicated fuse internet upgrade, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute necessary documents and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum?
Well, it's amazing, technology keeps changing. But when I first started, I think four years ago, we only had, I believe it's 10 megabytes of our pipeline that ran our system for the internet, well, and anything attached to the internet. And it was very little. And then we moved up to 30, and that's like doubled it, right? And we went ahead at that time and paid a little bit of, just a little of a surplus to go up to the pipeline to be 100 megabytes. And we're at that point now where we're jumping from 30 to 100. It's just everything, from the fire to the police, everything that's used takes up the bandwidth, so to speak, as far as internet power. This is costing the township as a whole about $100 extra a month. But it's just, we can't operate without it. The system drags and slows down, and you know, as far as safety services, you can't have that. So, I'm glad we thought ahead a few years ago to make the pipeline at least the 100. But we'll have to look at it for future. But that's what this is, is expanding our network capability.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-266, Resolution Entering Into Consulting Services Agreement With Focused Capital Solutions, LLC, Through December 31st, 2017, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution again? Mr. Landrum?
Yes, with Focused Capital Solutions, you know, this is our representation at the, well, state and local level, or whatever level we would need against, for policies and laws and everything. Very valuable this year in 2016, helped us stop some very, what would have been very bad laws that would have impacted the townships financially. So, I recommend that it's the same rate as last year, so there's no increase in for the services.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-267, Resolution Adopting Rules Under Revised Code 121.22F, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution again? Mr. Landrum?
Just an annual update, just tells of how we will, our procedures for posting our meetings and how we announce it, and the postings, and the usual things like that, which also goes along with the boards that we are over, the CIC, and things like that are also included. All those are kind of following the same procedure as the Board of Trustees has set.
Okay.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-268, Resolution Appointing Joseph Scher To The Delhi Township Board Of Zoning Appeals, Pursuant To Revised Code 519.13, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes. I'd like to thank Joseph Scher again for his reappointment to the Delhi Township Board Of Zoning Appeals. Thank you for his service.
Resolution 2016-269, Resolution Authorizing Additional Parks And Recreation Purposes Tax Levy, Certifying It To County Auditor And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum?
Just a formality now that the levy has passed. It takes a resolution for us to certify it to the county auditor so that it can, we can begin to receive income next first half of the year.
Okay.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-270, Resolution Appointing Financial Advisory Board And Amending And Restating The Organizational Structure And Responsibilities, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes. And again, thank you to our Fab appointees for signing for another year of volunteering your time. Thank you.
Some of them were kind of forced, but we won't go there.
Involuntary servitude.
Did we twist arms? Well, they were good arms to twist because they've done an excellent job, so.
Any Fab members? Surprise!
Resolution 2016-271, Resolution Appointing Kevin Rhodes To The Delhi Township Zoning Commission, Pursuant To Revised Code 519.04, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes. And again, this is a reappointment of Kevin Rhodes to the Delhi Township Zoning Commission. And again, thank you for his service and volunteer time.
Resolution 2016-272, Resolution Entering Into Professional Services Agreement With Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., For A Multi-Use Trail Economic Impact Analysis Study In Connection With The Delhi Township Strategic Redevelopment Plan, Authorizing The Community Development Director To Execute The Agreement, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Mr. DeLong?
Yeah, thank you, trustees. Back in August, you recall, we received a $20,000 grant through Hamilton County Planning And Development. With that grant, we're going to be doing this economic analysis study for potential bike paths. So, this is a study, not installation, as we like to stress. So, basically, what we're doing is we're going to hire Stan Tech. Stan Tech, if you remember, did our plan, the pikes. So, they are very familiar with the area. Part of the plan was discussing bike paths. So, we felt this was a strong candidate to go into contract with to get this done. We should have the study done by May to June of this year.
Okay.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-273, Resolution Amending Resolution 90-211 To Remove The No Parking Regulations At Odd Numbered Addresses Between 5203 And 5297 Delhi Pike At The Delhi Town Center, Authorizing Removal Of The Existing No Parking Signs And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
And discussion on this resolution? Mr. DeLong?
Sure, I'm going to date myself a little bit with this one. This original resolution passed two months after I graduated high school. So, it was back in 1990. With the redevelopment efforts on the Pike, we felt this was a need to kind of address the parking issues with some of our commercial strips, the first one being Del Fair. As you recall, right now, we have parking up adjacent to the building with a new design. This will allow that to happen. With this current, or with the resolution from 90-211, that would not allow that to happen. We did work in coordination with the Fire Department to make sure this was no negative impact on them. As we know, safety services are important to get to any type of emergency. And the chief was okay with the adjustment, so we will go forward from here if you guys agree.
Okay. Now, you referred to it as Del Fair, but it is now Delhi Town Center.
It's Delhi Town Center, yeah.
Okay. Formerly known as?
Till they get the new sign up and, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Did you just admit you're 46?
I'm not. Your math is bad.
I'm a lawyer.
I wonder if we have a good Fab board, right? Forty-four.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Luby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-274, Resolution Declaring The Police Department Speed Trailer No Longer Needed For Public Use, Finding That The Property Has No Value, Authorizing Disposal By Transfer To The Village Of Addiston For Continued Public Use By Its Police Department, And Dispensing With The Second Reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Chief Howarth?
Thank you, trustees. This speed trailer, you've probably seen it around the township in the past. We got it in 1997, so that's four years after I started here. So, we've had it 20 years. I'm almost 50 years old. I just thought I'd make this enjoyable for Pete, this last meeting. But Addiston asked to use it. If, as you've noticed probably around the township, we have the portable ones now. We have two of them that we can move from pole to pole, from easier to transport, don't have to pull it with a trailer and so forth. So, we've been utilizing those. This trailer's been sitting in the garage for probably the last four months, hasn't been used. Addiston's had some residents down there, and Addiston complained about Second Street. So, they called me. I loaned it to them probably about three or four weeks ago. And I realized it's something I could probably transfer to them, so that's what I'm looking to do. They appreciate it a lot.[1465.86]